Okay.
Okay, would you like to open the meeting?
All right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, March 10th, 2022, meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the village of Irma. And we're calling the meeting to order now. And we are up to making the pledge of allegiance. So then you have our official, yes, oh, we got bigger. That means we're even more loyal, okay? Let's, uh, let's pledge allegiance and flag of the United States of America.
For America. And to the republic for which it stands, and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Well, okay, now.
Roll call?
Roll call, please, yes.
Okay. Member Scott Meyer.
Here.
Member Cavell.
Yeah.
Member Berger. Okay, I don't know if this is him. Ad hoc member, Robin Lukens.
Here.
Ad hoc member Jacob Savinovitz.
Here.
Chairman Katz.
Here. And for the record, we are appointing Ms. Lukens and Mr. Simonowitz. As an act member as promoted.
As what?
No, as voting.
As voting member.
As voting members tonight.
Okay.
We have to approve the minutes, just a number of minutes today. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review them all. I need someone to make a motion. To, uh, one second, is that Mr. Berger?
I am here.
Oh, you are there, okay, Mr. Berger is here, okay.
All right.
All right, so.
That way we got to bump one of the ad hocks.
You have to make that decision, Arthur.
Who, who, Mrs. Savinowitz, do you mind standing down?
Again?
Yes, okay, so he stands down and we're left with, uh, four, uh, voting members plus, uh, Ms. Lukens, okay?
No, or you could have five. That's five.
We have five voting members?
Am I missing something?
One, two, three. Four, no, we have four regular members.
And, and Ms. Lukens.
And Ms. Lukens is five.
Right.
So I think that's what I said, okay.
Yeah.
All right, now approval, we need a motion to approve, uh, the minutes of several meetings.
Well, let's start with, uh, what is it, November 9th, Mr. Katz?
Yeah, I realized when I was posting that I didn't have that for some reason in the record, so I want to make sure I get it on the record.
All right, I read everything, if I may, Mr. Katz, I, Mr. Chairman. I read every thirty-four pages, it was, anyhow, I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 9th, 2021, as submitted.
I'll second Marty. Okay.
All right. All in favor?
All in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, unanimous, uh, December?
No, it's not December, January 13th.
Oh, there's no December 1st, okay.
We already did Decembers.
Oh, I see, okay, um, January, the January minutes, who's gonna make a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, I will accept the minutes of, well, January 13th, 2022.
Thank you, Scott.
Second the motion.
Second, okay, uh, roll call.
Who seconded that?
Listen.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, okay.
Hi.
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 Hi. Aye, 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 okay, uh, let's make that unanimous approval.
Okay, Arthur, you wanted to change something on the agenda?
Yes, uh, the next item, which is supposed to, which will be, uh, the application of Mr. Grunfeld. Uh, but we're gonna take this slightly out of order and do the two, um, extensions of the State Street Associates. Hopefully, that'll go quickly and then we can continue with Mr. Grunfeld. I guess we need, uh, is, uh, Mr. Baum here, anyone speaking for them?
I, I am here, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Nice to see you, nice to see you, Mr. Cavell and Mr. Meyer and.
Always a pleasure, Mr. Baum. Always.
Good to see you too, Paul.
I, I don't want to leave you out, Dan and Lou and Suzanne, so.
The whole gang, okay.
Nice to see you.
Mr. Baum, can you tell us why you're here?
Okay, so, thank you, so, um, as you know, or as some of the board members are aware, I represent State Street Associates. Um, there were two projects that were pending before the village, they had one at, um, 124 Route 59 and another project at 130 Route 59. Um, most of these projects were before the zoning board of appeals and received variances, uh, back in 2020 and, and 2000, both in 2020. So let's, let's start with 130 Route 59 first, because I see that is ahead, the number six on the agenda. So with that project, after we got our variances from the zoning board, um, it took some time before the zoning board of appeals decision was drafted and signed and filed. That didn't get done until May 6th, 2021, uh, more than a year after the approval. We were finally able to go back to the, the planning board, we received all our approvals on June 24th of 2021. But we're still waiting for the Department of Transportation to sign off on the project. I know they've been reviewing it, they've had all the plans, but we're concerned because that variance, as the board is aware, expires one year after the approval unless we obtain our building permits. And we haven't been able to obtain building permits. So I'm asking the board to grant an extension for one year for our ZBA variances that were granted with regard to 130 Route 59. And I'm assuming that that one-year extension will be more than enough to allow the DOT to complete their review, a sign-off on the project. We can then get our site plan approval signed by the chairman and, uh, we can proceed to go to building permit. So that, that's the first request that I'm making with regard to that application.
Need a motion to bring discussion on this, uh, application?
Well, I have one question, uh, Arthur.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Baum, so I think it was expressed in here that, um, this was, uh, not helped with the unfortunate, uh, circumstance of the pandemic. You know, with, um, agencies with delays and companies. I mean, just in general, that would have been, you know, compounding the delay, would you say?
Yes, Mr. Cavell, as, as you know, I mean, everything was shut down for a while, when everybody started getting back to work, they had a backlog of reviews, especially by the reviewing agencies like Department of Health and DOT and sewer district. Um, so it took a while for things to come back online and, and they're moving through, but, you know, not as quickly as everybody would like.
Okay, can I, can I add to this? That one of the, uh, many, um, executive orders issued by, uh, the former governor. Related to, um, stays on the expiration of building permits. Site plan subdivisions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that would have expired. When, whenever, uh, the, uh. Well, I don't know which, um, when that executive order ended, but it had to have been within, uh, the past six months. And, um. I think that there's a legal concept called tolling. So I think even absent this, I think Mr. Baum's being overly cautious. Uh, I think that the executive order would come into play here. So I wanted to add, you know, uh, that fact pattern, uh, to the fact pattern, uh, that the state. Uh, took it upon itself to address, um, issues such as this. And that, uh, uh, the applicant would have been entitled to a stay of the natural expiration, anyway.
Okay, doesn't hurt to be too cautious. Let me just ask, are we talking about, um, uh, section B of 210161, uh, time restrictions on variances? Uh, which Suzanne was kind enough to forward to me. Uh, section B starts off in the event that the applicant is required to obtain approval from the Village of Armont Planning Board. Uh, and I imagine you do need that and you haven't gotten it yet, is that correct?
But with regard to the, the, the 130 Route 59, we do have an approval, we do not have a signed site plan.
A signed site plan, so under what, uh, what provision does that come under?
Well, you know, when I, when I, when I read B, it's a little unclear, because it says it's gonna be told, but it's not gonna exceed one year from the date of the variance was originally granted, so. I, I think the intent of, of B, from my knowledge from other municipalities, was to say, if you need site plan approval, then until you get site plan approval, the, the time restraint doesn't start to run. So that it runs from final site plan approval, not from the grant of the variance, so I, I wasn't clear. I'm, I'm not sure which one applies, um, as, as Mr. Crash Hour indicated, we want to make sure that we're in compliance. Um, we assume for the basis of this discussion that it's gonna expire one year from May 6th without looking into tolling issues. Um, and what the applicable effect of the executive orders of the governor were, and we're just looking for a one-year extension.
Okay.
From that expiration date of, of, uh, May 6th, 2021.
Okay.
Excuse me.
We have a, a motion to grant a one-year extension to, um, the variance.
I'll make a motion that we grant the one-year extension for 130 Route 59.
The second?
Well, should you not answer the language, uh, Mr. Meyer, um, what is it, from May 7th, 2022?
May 6th.
2023, or May 6th? You know, just to add the timeframe for the record.
That works.
You agree with that?
Okay.
I agree with that. All right, and it's based till May 6th, 2023, is that correct? Okay, who's seconding, uh, his motion, Mr. Meyer?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, call the vote, uh, vote, please.
Okay, um, Mr. Cavell?
Aye.
Okay, um, Ms. Lukens?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Berger?
Aye.
Chairman Katz?
Yes, okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the second item, uh, of the extensions for, um, uh, 124 Route 59.
So with regard to 124 Route 59, we're still before the planning board. Um, we filed our application back in October of last year, and we've been before the planning board on, for the last three months, and it was adjourned again till April. So we're, we're, uh, we're in the same situation with that application as well, excuse me?
To March, not April.
Yes, to March, yes, I forget, we still have time left this month, yeah.
That's okay.
Okay, um, so, uh, with regard to that application, you know, we, we still have to finish up with our site plan approval with the planning board. Um, and then, you know, go through the process of getting our check prints reviewed and signed off by the various agencies. So we envision that we're gonna need more time than May 6th, 2022 to accomplish that, so. With regard to this application, we're also asking for that additional one-year extension of the variance till May 6th, 2023.
Okay, so, anyone have a, make a motion, please? One second, is there any discussion amongst the members here about, uh, about this?
No, I'll make a motion, Mr. Katz.
Yes, and what is your motion?
With, with respect to 124 Route 59. Make a motion to extend the expiration, expiration date from May 6th, 2022 to May 6th, 2023.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second Marty.
Okay.
All in favor? Want me to do a roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
All right, go for it.
Okay, uh, Ms. Lukens?
Aye.
Mr. Berger?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cavell?
Aye.
Chairman Katz?
Yes, okay, pass unanimously.
Thank, thank you very much, and I also appreciate the board's ability to put us on the agenda right away and to take us first, thank you all, and I appreciate your considerations.
Okay.
Hope to see you in person very soon.
In good health, yes, okay, moving on to, um, the application of Mr. Isaac Grunfeld.
Would you like me to read the public hearing notice?
Just about the issue of that, yes, Suzanne, please.
Sure. Public hearing on the application of owner Isaac Grunfeld for variances from Armont zoning code, Article 3, Section 210, Table 3R-40. Variances are being sought for front setback 50 feet required with 23.9 feet proposed. Front yard 50 feet required with 23.9 feet, feet proposed. Developmental coverage 20% required with 20.1% provided and floor area ratio FAR 20% required with 21% proposed. To build in addition to the rear of the house as well as a foyer in the front to an existing single-family residence. The property is located on the west side of Overbrook Drive, approximately 20 feet north of Twin Lakes Drive. The lot is designated as section 62.05 Block 2 and Lot 53 on the Town of Ramapo tax map. The property is located in the R4 zoning district and is comprised of .6 acres. The street address is 22 Overbrook Drive, Armont, New York 10952.
Thank you, Suzanne, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
I believe this is Conway's on.
Yes.
Their engineer, Mr. Gdansky's also here.
Yes, uh, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I'm sorry I couldn't come on sooner, I, with the windstorm the other night, we lost power. Um, at first I thought it was my computer and we realized it was the Wi-Fi, so, thank goodness, my younger son was here to, uh, make the connection, otherwise I would have had to do this by phone. The board may recall, we were here last time, and it was, it was legitimate question or issue with regard to which zone do we apply? The, um, there was a, as, as the board is aware, the applicant, um, by way of historical record on the case, the applicant was granted a building permit for a rear addition on July 27th of 2021. The applicant then later applied for a building permit for the front entry foyer and was denied or referred back to the ZBA. The, um, the applicant came back to the board, we appeared before this board on January 13th, seeking the front setback and yard variances from the R15 bulk table. Because the applicant had previously, when the applicant had, uh, merged the lots for a single-family home, the merger of the two undersized lots. For 7,500 square feet or more, we used the table that was the most similar to the lot size for the vacant lot, so that was back then, the R15. The building inspector and, and the code, there is, um, the, the village of Armont code was not exactly clear on this issue. So, uh, we went back and conferred both with Mr. Gdansky, we conferred with your village attorney and, uh, Mr. Zumo, the, uh, to come back, and everyone is now agreed. That the R15 would not apply, but rather the R40. So that being the case, the building inspector determined that, in following the R40 bulk table for these, um, for the requested. Rear in addition to the front, the foyer, that the, um, bulk table for the R40 would require, um, the rear addition, which was previously granted, even though it's under construction. Would require variances as well as the front for the foyer itself. The, um, the rear addition is the board was not aware, because it's not something that came to the board before. The rear addition would include a kitchen study, family room on the first floor, as well as two bedrooms, a home office, and a passover kitchen in the basement. Additionally, there would be a deck in the rear and a small entry that we talked about last time when we came in for the front, uh, foyer entryway. Um, it does require for the front foyer entryway, which is a, what I would consider a small, um, addition or a small variance. It does require, because of the way the property's situated, that the required front setback of 50 feet, um, for the R40. Would require a front setback here, we're at 23.9. The required front yard, again, for an R40, not an R15, is 50 feet, where the provided front yard is 23.9. And the required development coverage for the R40 is 20, and we're slightly over at 20.1%. And then the same thing with the required FAR at 20% and the provided FAR at 21%. Had this been the R15, due to the size of the lot, uh, we would not have required variances, uh, with regard to any of the, um, the rear addition, but strictly the front foyer. So we've now, and this was a legitimate, um, this was not an issue where the client was trying to be cute or push something past the building inspector, this was a legitimate issue that all of us collectively worked on, and I want to thank. Not just, uh, Mr. Gdansky, but Mr. Crash Hour and the building inspector, because, um, every once in a while, you'll deal with an issue that. Requires everyone's considered expertise and opinion and efforts, and I think we've finally come to that point, so. I'm hopeful that the board will, uh, taking that all into mind, will view the application and approve the application. The other additional thing that we received, um, dated March 8th, was the GML review from the County Department of Planning, which shockingly listed as an approve. In all the years I've been doing this, both as municipal attorney for municipalities as well as for private clients, it's rare to see an approve. Uh, typically, it's a disapprove, there, the, uh, GML does not indicate, there's no overrides indicated for the two, uh, comments that are listed. But I would note that that is a, um, very unusual, so I'm hopeful that the board, um, will, um, see the benefit of the work of everyone's put into this collectively. And, um, I was gonna ask Mr. Gdansky if he wanted to add anything at this moment.
I mean, I just jumped in here for one moment, Suzanne, uh, can we read those, the GML and, and the other, those that you had into the record?
Right.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, uh, before we do that, um, uh, the application has to be judged on its merits, but I have to tell you. The cooperation, uh, that the applicant and all the professionals, um, that work for him have shown. Is rare, I've been doing this for a very, very long time. Um, and they went above and beyond, uh, to accommodate, um, all of our requests. And, uh, once again, uh, application, uh, has to stand on its own, but, um, I think it's very rare. At, but important to point out, um, when an applicant goes above and beyond, uh, doesn't, uh, always happen, that's for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Crash Hour, and of course, it's actually the applicant and his staff, uh, that are working for him, for all the cooperation and scholarship that's gone into this. Ms. Suzanne, uh, can you, um, read those letters into the record, please, then we'll go forward with Mr. Gdansky, yes?
Okay, sure, we received the Rockland County Department of Planning GML, uh, which is an approval, and I'm just gonna read the two comments, it's dated March 8th. The following additional comfort, um, I'm sorry, since the proposed variance application will have no adverse impact on county-wide interest, this matter is remanded for local determination and may have an approval. The following additional comment is offered strictly as an observation and is not part of our general municipal law review. This, the board may have already addressed this point or may disregard it without any formal vote under the GML process. Retaining walls that are over four feet in vertical height shall be designed by a licensed New York State professional engineer. And be in compliance with the New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code. Design plans shall be signed and sealed by the licensed New York State professional engineer. Um, so that's the comments on the GML, we have a letter.
One second, Suzanne, uh, Mr. Conway, has that happened here?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the wall was designed by a licensed engineer.
Yes.
And, and so on it, right?
To, to be clear, you're able to comply with that condition, we, uh, the board doesn't have to consider an override, you will comply with it.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A Town of Ramapo letter dated February 28th. Essentially, it's the standard comments that a sanitary sewer review is required prior to the final plot plan and the filing fee. The Rockland County Sewer District Number 1 must be given an opportunity to comment. Add a note on the plans that if the lowest floor is below the upstream rim elevations, an interior check valve must be installed. Provide note that existing connection be utilized, and that's signed by Edward Moran, uh, engineer 2.
One second, uh, Mr. Conway, has, uh, that, I know you don't have to, but that complied with?
Yes, will comply, yes.
Okay, continue Suzanne, please.
Okay, um, Rockland County Highway Department dated February 24th, 2022. Um, they're in receipt of the plan, they, um, offer the following comment, they believe that the proposed, proposed action would have no significant effects upon the county roads system. They have no further comments, and that's from Diane Raziksham, engineer 3, and that's dated February 24th. And lastly, um, Rockland County Health, um, dated March 4th. Uh, they've received the application, and their only comment is the application is to be made to the Rockland County Department of Health for review of stormwater management system. To be in compliance with the county mosquito code, that's a standard comment.
Has that happened, though, has they complied with, uh, that, uh, mosquito codes in?
But this isn't even the time of year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it doesn't apply right now, they just gave us their standard comment.
One strong mosquito.
I see, uh, so we don't have to worry about that, okay, uh, Mr. Gdansky, I think you were called by Mr. Conway?
Yeah, I think I basically concur with everything Kevin said, and I wanted to commend the, the village's staff for assisting us and working through this and getting it the way that it should be.
Uh, one more thing, are you being called as a, Mr. Conway, are you calling him as a witness, is I have to swear him in?
I believe he was last time, but if, if, if you so choose, that's fine.
All right, Mr. Gdansky, do you, uh, affirm that whatever you're gonna tell us is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. Continue, please.
So that's, that's basically it. What I, what I said previously.
All right, um, Mr. Conway, you can continue, please?
Yes, no, I just wanted to see if the board had any questions or any, uh, additional concerns or issues, and I did wish to, I didn't mention before, but the village engineer was also very helpful with this, so I didn't want to, uh, leave her out of the mix.
Okay, I'm sure she appreciates that, uh, um, so one second, are you, uh, completed, Mr. Conway, you completed your?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair, I have.
Okay, um, uh, can we open?
Public hearing?
Public hearing, yes, uh, is anyone, Suzanne, is anyone in the public who wishes to speak?
Well, you need to make a motion to open the public hearing, or continue, oh, you don't need a motion, it's a, no, it's, it is a new public.
It's a new one.
It's a new application.
I make a motion to the public here.
Okay, second?
I second Marty.
Hey, Marty, second. Okay, now, is anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this matter?
If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and give your name and address, and I'll call on you. Right now, I have no hands raised.
No one, okay, um. Should we close the public hearing or, or, uh?
Going twice.
What's that?
I have to say go once, going twice.
Okay, so make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion with no comments, uh, we called the, uh, public hearing at this time.
The second motion.
Thank you, Scott, who's, oh, Mr. Berger seconded it, okay.
Yes, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay, uh.
If I can just say something.
Yes, now, anyone on the board who wishes to address this?
But before you do that, um.
Oh.
With regard, with regard to seeker.
Right, this is, this is a, the planning board already deal with that.
Uh, it doesn't, that, they stand on their own. It doesn't, they stand on their own with regard to this, but it's, they, they dealt with it, and I, and came to the same conclusion. It's a type 2 action requiring no review, additional review under seeker.
Okay, do we need a motion for that or a statement is enough?
Statement is enough.
Is anyone on the board who wishes to have some comments on this application? Okay, so then, I don't think anyone has made, called attention to themselves. Okay, so should we make a motion on the application itself? Do we have a clear listing of the variances being, being sought?
I wrote them down, Arthur, I think.
Again?
I think it's front setback, front yard, floor area ratio, and developmental.
Correct.
You have numbers to go with that, Marty?
Well, I can, if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we should stick that into the, into the motion.
Well, yeah. Stick what into the motion?
The specific numbers on those.
Specific numbers.
Well, of course, if you want, I, I, I will make a motion if you grant me the opportunity.
Please do, Mr. Cavell.
Sorry to be so formal, but I just want to feel needed.
You're a formal guy. I, I, we formally appreciate it. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Our little drama here, you know, we're on TV, you know, so, okay.
Don't bother.
I'll make, make a motion to approve the application of property owner Isaac Grunfeld, 22 Overbrook Drive, Airmont, New York. Lot is designated as Section 62.05 Block 2 and lot, I need my reading glasses. 3 on the Town Ramapo tax map. And to grant the following variances. First, front setback, where 50 feet is required, they're looking for a 36.1-foot variance. They have only proposed 23.9 feet, so I'm saying that we should grant 36.1-foot variance for the front setback. The same goes for the front yard. Same numbers apply. They're looking for a 36.1-foot variance from that requirement. So that would be part of the motion. Part of the motion is also to grant a 0.1% variance for developmental coverage from 20% to 20.1%. And to grant the variance for floor area ratio where the requirement is 20%. Their request is 21%, so the variance would be for 1% in addition to the floor area ratio. That's it. Did I, did I do that okay?
That's all right.
Did, that was spectacular.
Wait, I just got a thumbs up from our building inspector, and that hasn't happened in my entire life. Thank you.
Marty, I'll be honored to second all of that.
That was Scott, Scott, that was Scott just seconded.
Yes, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, let's call the roll.
Okay. Member Meyer?
I approve the required setbacks. Required setback, the required front yard, required development coverage, and required FAR. I have no issues with that. If I said it early, I approve.
Okay. Ms. Lucans?
I approve.
Okay. Mr. Berger?
I approve the figures that were just stated.
Okay. Mr. Cavell?
Well, you know, given the character, wait a second.
Yes.
Given the characteristics of the neighborhood,
I don't feel that the variances granted
would detract from the character of this neighborhood here. And in most instances, the requests were minimal. Not all of them. So I approve.
Okay, and Chairman Katz?
Do we have to go through those five factors, Dan?
Marty covered, Marty covered quite a number, and the, Mr. Conway apparently covered it, if the board approved it. So that'll be reflected in the resolution.
Okay, then, having known that, I vote yes to approve the motion for granting the variances. And that means what, five to?
Five to zero.
Okay, so motion carried, variances granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good-
No problem. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay.
All right, but don't, that doesn't mean that the members can leave.
Yes, I have new business. We have to talk about new business.
The more I'm on TV, the more I like it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, applicant, let's go on to do business.
Okay, first of all, I had no submissions for the April 5th meeting. We moved it due to one of the holidays to a Tuesday evening, but no one submitted. And this was not continued, so we will not have a meeting on April 5th. That being said, we will have a meeting for May 12th. I do have a submission. So we absolutely will have that meeting. We still do not know if meetings are in person or continued in Zoom. As Dan knows, and he'll, he tells me, I'll let everyone else know.
Yeah, which will probably be on the 15th, but go ahead.
Yes, so that won't be till May, when we know our fate in terms of what we're doing for that meeting. The other item is training. It is really important that everyone take their training. I sent the list that I had from 2021 back to Rockland County Planning and asked for an update because some people have taken classes. They, that was last week. They said they'd get back to me this week. Once I have that, I'm going to do my usual one-pager that lists everybody's name and what's required.
Suzanne.
Yes.
They sent an email.
I know. Can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Suzanne is very efficient. She's on top of everything. Thank you. They sent an email last week with the dates of the sessions that are coming up. So I sent it to everyone to save the dates. For the new members, it's really important because you have 18 months from your appointment to get certified, which means sessions 1, 2, and 3. And every year, everyone must take four hours of training. It is important as these sessions come up, if you can possibly take the class, right now there's Zoom, which is a lot easier to take them because they only offer the session once, typically once a year, except for session 2, which is typically once in the spring and once in the fall. You will get a certification once you secured sessions 1, 2, and 3. And that's good for two years. After the two years, if you take session 2, that recertifies you. If I go by the list of last year, I can tell you that whoever was certified previously, Mr. Katz, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Cavell, you need to get recertified. You also need your four hours for this year. And I think, Ms. Lucans, you're missing session 3, and the new members need all sessions 1, 2, and 3. Today, they sent. Yes, sorry.
Two for Mr. Arthur and I, you said session 2?
And, and Scott, yes.
Session 2.
Yeah, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
Marty, what are you doing Saturday night?
I'm gonna send it in writing once I get the final update from Rockland County Planning. But session 1, which won't be offered until next year unless they change their protocol, I highly suggest for those new members who have not taken that to take it, and I will forward the email that I received today on, on registering for it. So the new members should really consider if they can take it. And then as the other sessions come up, I'll forward that as well.
But there's Zoom, right?
That's what I was gonna mention.
Why? Now there's Zoom, right?
Right now, they're as of Zoom, correct. So it's a lot easier to take.
Oh, yes. You go with Marty, we usually do these together, but I'll take Zoom.
I would pick you up, Arthur, you know that.
Okay, we might still have to do that, okay.
And then sometime in May, Dan usually does his yearly ethics training. We'll coordinate that for all the boards. And I-
Personally, personally.
Yeah, well, we'll see what happens. If not, I can coordinate it via Zoom. And there are some changes he wants to communicate to everyone. But I always ask Rockland County Planning for the credits on that. And that would go towards your two, your four hours that are required. So every session that you take, you'll get hours for to accumulate towards your four hours, but you really need sessions 1, 2, and 3.
How many hours in session 2?
Set, session, I think they're usually two hours.
Two hours.
Yes.
Two hours, and Dan's presentation is also two hours?
Typically, right, an hour to two hours.
Three hours.
Three hours, I don't, we haven't done it in two years, so.
I, I'm telling you.
I forget.
And the last one may have been longer because we actually did Village Board, Planning Board, and Zoning Board in the same meeting.
Yes, that was a long night.
So I had a lot more questions.
Yes.
Do you also do it Zoom, Dan?
Of course.
Of course. Okay.
We can coordinate that. So I, I just wanted to point that out, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you in May.
Oh, I, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Oh.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Marty.
And Marty seconded it, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody, good to see you all.
Good night, everyone. Have a great night.
Take care. Be well. Bye.